Ah, no.
Siri.
No.
Yeah, yeah, we were in a chat and talked about it and I should call or not.
Well, you should.
Okay. I'll put a 1000 to connect with you. Yeah, Angela can do it. I mean, I don't.
She can go back.
I don't know the, I can just call.
The screen, screen's good. Share looks alright then? When I do that there?
Yep, that looks good. When you have it up.
Ben, did you already wind the minutes and start pre-populating them?
I didn't ask him.
Brendan must have.
Hi Kate.
Hello.
I have a question on this. So, what percentage, the fifty percent or fifty-three, is that what we're anticipating for?
Hey Dave.
Hey Dave.
That's just, I don't know, the division.
Okay, what we're anticipating.
I have a point for that. What happened?
Okay, and so for this development, we're expecting nineteen.
That's.
Hi Kate.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
Not too bad. Managed not to freeze solid, so we're good. I said I've managed not to freeze solid, so we're good.
Oh gosh, that's quite a scene.
Care for the future type thing, okay.
Yeah, and. Wait for Webster, warm our plate of people to work like, and so we grab all the addresses, pull them from Skyward, and cable them.
Okay, is that the one that is driving ups or downs on the other side of Webster, the newer houses, that's south of? What's the street that crosses, Bridge or? There's like a bright blue house in that subdivision, is that?
See that domino right there?
Yeah. There's a soccer field in it?
There's a lot.
A soccer field? It's like right across from Webster. Like the U C N?
No, it's north of Webster.
Yeah, it's like this bridge right?
It's north of Bridge Road?
Yeah.
It's northwest of North Webster.
Okay, so it's not the one that's directly across from North?
It's next roundabout right there, and that roundabout.
Kitty porn like that? I think Kate said she, is she calling him?
Yep, yes, she's calling him.
Yeah, I know that, that just called him.
Hi Kate. It's Jen.
Are you here with Kate?
Yeah.
So, I'm in court, so um, I thought it'd be best if I stayed here. So, I'm hoping you'll be able to hear me throughout the meeting. Was everybody there to get started?
Yep, all the committee members here and Dave here as well.
Okay. Um, so can I go ahead and have a meeting to order?
Yeah, just be, uh, just so you know too, there's a member of the public here that's recording the, uh, meeting as well.
Okay.
So, no swearing this time?
And this would be, uh, Todd and Tyler here as well.
Okay.
Yeah, you can call the order whenever you're ready.
Okay, well then I will call the meeting to order.
Six thirty. Alright.
Um, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Has anyone had a chance to look those over?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes. Hold on a second.
Uh, I will leave.
Aye, aye.
Okay, minutes approved. So, they first, then, agenda item is the audit.
Uh, yep, uh, so I'll take it from there. Um, so.
Okay.
We just wrapped up our, uh, audit for last fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty, twenty-one, and, uh, that process involves our auditors, um, being on sites and, uh, working remotely over the summer, and then going through various items throughout the fall as you wrap up, um, the fiscal year, but ends June thirtieth. Um, and then there's miscellaneous things that we work through throughout the, the fall and the winter, just to wrap up different claims and stuff like that, and, uh, different auditing guidelines that may come out. Um, and typically by December it's starting to wrap up and, uh, we submit the final statements, and so. So, we've gotten to that point, uh, and so now, now we're ready to present that to P and F from the board, uh, and tonight joining us is Brett Nelson, who's with Johnson Block, uh, he leads the team, um, for our auditors. And he's just gonna kind of go through a quick presentation, uh, of the statements, not the whole statement, because it's sixty pages of pretty dense material. Um, just kind of point out some of the highlights for, uh, this fiscal, fiscal year that ended June thirtieth. Do you want to take it away, Brent?
Alright, thanks Ben. Hopefully, hopefully my volume audio is coming through okay for everybody.
Yep.
And then, uh, yeah, so, yeah, like Ben said, Brett Nelson, audit partner with Johnson Block, we've been doing the audit for about four years now. Um, I was gonna try to summarize the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one audit, just hit the highlights. Uh, I do have the full report with me, I see it was posted with the agenda, um, but I was just gonna stick to the PowerPoint tonight, so I'm gonna share my screen at point tonight, um. But if you can't see my screen, I think that the presentation I plan on using is out, uh, I see that in Word docs. Um, I, I was planning on being there tonight, but just some issues came up with, uh, with one of my kids being quarantined, so I. So, I appreciate you letting me do this here, uh, virtually, much appreciated. So, I'm gonna share my screen here quick. So, hopefully, uh, the people that can see my screen that's coming through, um, are good enough to read or, or really, uh, coming through on your screen. Um, so just, I'll, I'll, I'll page through it. First slide, just a quick overview, uh, we completed our, our financial savings for the year on the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Like Ben said, we were onsite in June for a day, and then we're onsite for three days in August, and then we were wrapping up things throughout the fall, and then we, uh, issued our report in December before the December fifteenth, or due to the DTI by December fifteenth. We wouldn't have been ready to issue in November, but we were waiting for some final S R two and S R three allocation, so we wanted to make sure everything was, uh, not gonna change, and they released that information there in the late fall. Uh, our, in our financial statements, our, what was our opinion on the financial statement, we issued an unmodified opinion. Um, and that's the highest opinion we can, that we can issue, and basically means we believe the audit financial statements in all material respects are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, no issues came to our attention. We also have to do some compliance testing in conjunction with our financial statement audit. We, we haven't issued that report yet, there's some delay in the federal guidance that happened, it was similar to what happened last year. Um, with so much federal funding flowing through the schools and cities, all governments, um, it's caused some delays in, in some compliance supplements. So, we're pretty much done, but we haven't, we're, we can't quite issue our report yet until they release this addendum that should be coming any, any day now. Um, but the, the financial statements themselves, those are done, those are issued, those are finalized, before we finalize those, um, management review and accepted a draft report. Um, just some other reporting we do, there's some annual reporting to DTI, we have to certify our numbers, the district certifies its numbers, um, for twenty twenty in August, we come back. We come in in September and basically certify, um, what the district reported in that, so we did that in September. Um, in addition to the financial statements, we also issue a board letter, uh, in conjunction with any audit financial statement, so, um, I'll touch on that a little bit later. I'm just getting into the numbers a little bit, looking specifically at the general fund, the comparative look here, um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one on the left side, June thirtieth, twenty twenty on the right. Um, total assets of just the general fund at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, about ten, ten point two million. Up from the prior year by about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, so a pretty, pretty healthy increase in total assets, uh, year over year. A big driver of that, there was a lot of S R revenue that came through in, in twenty twenty, and that's expected to continue here in twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the total assets are up about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, so assets, um, liabilities, what the district owes others for the general fund, total liabilities, um, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, down quite a bit from the year prior, one million eighty-six, down about three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty was a little bit of a u- unique year, um, nineteen twenty was when the COVID shutdown hit mid-March, and there were some big payables, and, and the district worked through. Things was right, um, right way with the bus season, and there was some flooring, so, um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty wasn't usually high in that regard, just with some of those things that came up. But fund balance, assets minus liabilities, and the difference is your fund balance, what, what's the district's fund balance, balance was about nine point five million in the general fund. So, a pretty, a, a real healthy increase from the, um, the year prior, about a, almost a one point three million dollar net income, basically a net income increase in fund balance that occurred in twenty twenty-one. Just looking at the revenues and expenses of the general fund, so total revenues of the general fund were a little over thirty-eight million dollars. Comparing that to the year prior, a little over thirty-seven million dollars, thirty-seven million, so about an increase of, uh, about a million dollars in revenue, um, in twenty twenty-one versus the year prior. Big driver of that, there was an increase in aid, and then I mentioned the amount of federal money coming through with the S R fund has really, um, increased here in the last couple of years with S R and, and, and some of the other federal programs flowing through. Uh, total expenditures, thirty-six million, um, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, up about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand from the year prior. Grants like S R funding are tend to be expenditure driven, so you don't get the revenue until you spend the money, so as revenue goes up, it's common that we'll see expenses go up as well. Especially with, with everything with the COVID and the precautions taken there. Uh, other financing sources used, there'd be transfers between funds, really not very much in twenty twenty-one for, for the general fund. Um, last year, the district made a half million dollar contribution to what is called, uh, the Fund Forty-Six, the Long Term Capital Improvement Fund, um, a, a trust fund. A similar transfer wasn't made for twenty twenty-one, but overall for twenty twenty-one, like I mentioned above, um, net income for the year, um, one point two eight, almost one point three million dollars. Um, overall, so that's just looking at the general fund, that, that fund tends to get the most attention, um, looking at all the governmental funds, um, total governmental fund decreases from the year are twenty-six point seven million dollars, and, and I'll go into that, uh, because it, it gets inflated or heavily swayed due to some specific things, but. The general fund, like I said, one point three million dollars, capital projects fund decreased almost twenty million dollars, and that's the continued spend down of the, the referendum debt proceeds. So, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, that, that referendum borrowings were becoming fully spent. There was gonna be some runout costs here, at least in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, but there's, uh, twenty twenty-one was another heavy year of spending for the use of those referendum debt proceeds. Uh, debt service was the other big driver, um, decreased about eight point five million, and that was due to the, uh, the payoff of a bond anticipation note that crossed years. Food service fund, uh, there's a separate fund for Fund Fifty, the food service program of the district is completely separate from the general fund. Um, sort of really healthy increase in fund balance for twenty twenty-one, o- over two hundred thousand. Um, and revenue in that fund was really a lot higher in twenty twenty-one versus prior years, and a big driver of that was with the increase in federal revenue from. That program, that free and reduced lunch program, um, come, typically comes with some income eligibility, who can get federally reimbursed, but when COVID hit, those income eligibility guidelines were scrapped, and basically everybody was getting free lunch regardless of income or income level, so, but that ultimately led to some big increases in one fifty renters. Uh, and then the, the other fund I'll mention here is, um, the Fund Seventy-two, or, excuse me, uh, Fund Seventy-three, where the, uh, the district has a trust set aside to pay for some future employee, uh, post-retirement benefits, and there's about four hundred and forty-two thousand set up in that fund, specifically set aside to pay off those future benefits. Uh, just a quick five-year trend and, and general fund balance, I mentioned as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the general fund balance is nine point five million. How is that compared to the year of recent, the last five years, and, and as you can see, it is the highest it's been, uh, the last five years. Um, little dip here in, in recent years, and then trending back upward, um, there. General fund balance, a quick calculation represented almost twenty-six percent of the twenty twenty-one expenditures. Um, the district does have a policy where they want fund balance to range about, and, and they, the district wants its fund balance to not be below fifteen to twenty percent, so being at that twenty-six percent, you're well above. Well above that, uh, minimum threshold that the district has for itself. Uh, just looking at, quickly at revenues, you know, where does the district's revenues come from, and the biggest piece of the pie, fifty-three percent comes from taxes. Property, um, property taxes pretty much exclusively. Um, there is a comparative look here, this is twenty twenty-one school year, nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty school year, so increase in taxes between years. Second biggest source of the district's revenues is state aid, about thirty-five percent of your revenues from state aid, uh, up, up with a significant increase in state aid for twenty twenty-one as well, about one point four million dollar increase. Um, and then I referenced the fed, the, the amount of federal money flowing through, not just Peterburg, but through all school districts, has really increased here in recent years, you know. Almost two point nine million for twenty twenty-one compared to a little over a million in the year prior, so those S R funds, um, the increase in the, the federal food service are really flowing a lot more federal money through school districts. And you might see the, the big decrease here in other local sources, from four million down to one point four. That, a big driver of that was the turf, the external turf donations ever coming through in nineteen twenty as part of the, the stadium project there, so. Just some, some fluctuations, both at state aid, um, you know, fifteen, almost sixteen million dollars, over, about fifteen and a half million of it, just from these three main programs, general aids, about twelve million, for pupil aids, over two million, and then state special ed is about one point two million. And then just for what was the most significant federal money, uh, you know, I mentioned S R, that's something that's brand new to the district, it was about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, for this year, and then food service, eight hundred and forty thousand, comparing that to the year prior was about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand, so those, those income eligibility guidelines going well, really, going away, really increased the federal revenue flowing through the district. Uh, just a quick look at the five-year trend in the district's tax levy, um, you could see it was pretty flat here for, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then it's steadily gone up here in recent years, and, and the biggest factor of that is with, with the referendum, that issuing almost sixty million dollars here within the, the last couple of years ago, comes with additional levy funds to pay off that, that debt service. Um, the levy has suddenly gone up here in recent years, it's just like, of a table showing that increase in levy, um, but equalized value of property within the district has also increased, so. Even though the tax levy's been going up here for five years, the, the mill rate, the tax rate has been going down. So, you're seeing the increase, but actually the, the mill rates have been actually going down, and so just comparing that to the K twelve, K through twelve average mill rate for all the counties and districts, it's, districts went pretty consistently below the K twelve average. What's not shown in the graph, I know in twenty-one, twenty-two, the levy was a little over twenty-two million, which is an, almost a nine percent decrease, so if I do a similar graph next year, you're gonna see that trend, upward trend go back down, so I, it's not shown in the table, but I did wanna mention it there below. Just a quick look at, uh, the, the long-term debt of the district, I mentioned the referendum, you know, here in the last couple of years, almost sixty million dollars of debt has been issued for that referendum that was passed in November two thousand and eighteen, I believe, um, so that's the biggest component of the long-term debt. Here's the breakdown by individual debt issue of that outstanding almost fifty-nine million dollars of long-term debt as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Roughly fifty-three million of it relates to the referendum borrowings. The state does have a limit on how much debt the, the district can issue, and that limit for the district is actually two hundred and eighteen million, um. That, that's how much is available, the limit was actually two hundred and seventy-six million, so even with a significant amount of debt, the district does have capacity, that the state would allow the district to issue more debt if it ever did need to. Uh, but yeah, this, this is just my last slide, overall conclusions, as I mentioned, I, the district has a really strong fund balance in its general fund here, um, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, mentioned in conjunction with any audit, we have to do a letter to the Board of Education, goes through what, what our significant estimates were in the, um, in the financial statements, some actuaries have to get involved, so we know, note that throughout. Some general comments, commonly called management letter comments, um, there's a big new governmental accounting standard on the horizon that's gonna impact twenty-one, twenty-two, so we put some information out there, um, to read about that new standard, that's something we're really planning for as we look ahead to the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two audits. Another thing we mentioned in, in the letters about, yeah, usually hazardous transportation plans, just to review that annually, that's been a, a DTI push, that's for those students that are bused to school, um, but they only live zero to two miles away, so if that is the case, they can be counted as long as they're within a hazardous plan. So, we, especially with districts that have a lot of developments going on, to review that every year to make sure you're capturing all those areas that do have hazardous, um, ways to school. And then cash, interest income went down a lot in twenty-one, twenty-two compared to the prior year, some of that's to be expected when, when COVID hit, all the interest rates plummeted. Um, but we did, we did see, one thing we saw was there were some big cash balances in some non-interest-bearing accounts, or really low interest barriers, so. Try to maximize, I know it's tough, but try to maximize interest income if you can, and to at least get some interest on, on all those balances. Um, I mentioned the report on internal control and compliance that's currently in draft format, I, I reviewed it, we can't issue a report yet until, um, until this addendum comes out. Um, but we're not planning on, at this point, we don't see anything that warrants a compliance finding, nothing has come to our attention that we see a compliance finding necessary. We do have, have to opine on internal control as well, we did, we do plan on having a couple additional, couple findings this year with internal control, and we, for the six thirty twenty audit, we didn't have any internal control findings, this year we are planning on adding two findings. Um, and they, and they somewhat go hand in hand. Um, first one is during the audit process, we had to make some adjustments that we thought were material, basically they're big amounts that we had to make an audit adjustment, so when that happens, something in the district's internal control allowed, you know, a, a, a material adjustment not, didn't happen, so when we're, we're making material adjustments, we have to disclose that as a finding. And then just kinda, kinda goes with that, just talk, we have a, we're planning on having a find on, on just, uh, there was a lack of a financial close process, you know, there was accounts payable, audit entries we had to make, um, there were, there were some issues with reconciling cash throughout the year, and I know there was turnover, um, and, and positions that idle, I think, for several, a, a good amount of time, um, but there were difficulties in reconciling cash through, through parts of the year, and we ended up making some audit journal entries for, with some cash accounts, accounts receivable, accounts payable, debt, so when we're making entries like that, we are required to disclose a finding. During the course of our audit, we got, received full and complete cooperation from, um, district personnel. With that, I, I, I take any questions, or do you want me to expand on anything?
I don't have any questions. Questions?
Sir, I, I have a number of questions, but I feel like, because this is my first time going through this, um, a lot of my questions have to do with how, uh, you know, whether devaluation, how does the S R fit in, uh, the tax buddy chart, and so I'm thinking maybe, um, Ben and I could just sit down and kind of, you could kind of walk me through some of that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so, I guess my questions are more, you know, than that's the birth of how does it all come together, not necessarily just exact support.
Yeah, we can ask.
I guess my only questions would be on the internal control findings, do we feel we have committed adjustments that they're taking care of?
Yeah, we kind of expected that with, uh, the turnover, like Brendan said, with the new accountant, um, kind of working through those pieces.
Okay.
Um, especially, um, since they didn't have accounting experience in the background, it's more a finance background, so, uh, just gave up the speed on that, and, uh, it was vacant for a couple of months, and so there was cleaning up of that and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Not that there's anything that was missing, it's just, basically what he's saying is that the auditors end up doing a lot of things, making journal entries to clean it up and, uh, finalize the accounts, where in the past, we may have done that beforehand when they come, come, start the audit, so, yeah.
Is it, I think, accountant and internal person?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we're good, Brent, so, thanks for the presentation, um, if we do have any questions, we'll be sure to follow up with, with you, um, and report back, but, uh, next step is we'll probably share this with the, the full board, um, not with a full presentation, but just share with them the account, accounting statements, um, but if anything does come up, we'll be sure to, to share with you and, um, reach out again.
Thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thanks Brent.
Thank you.
Take care.
And just, some further background for the audit, so, we are required to do an audit as a public entity every year, and so, uh, the vendor we've had, like Brent said, we've had them for four years, uh, they've done a nice job, um, to get to that process, we went through an RFP and all that, and, uh, we're pretty happy with them, they're good to work with and pretty thorough, so. So, next item we have is open enrollment seats, uh, so in your packet you'll see a memo, uh, that kind of goes over the details of how we approach open enrollment each year. Um, kind of the process is, is that we forecast out what enrollment is gonna look like for the upcoming year, uh, based on current, uh, enrollments and class size, or class sections that we have by grade. And the policy basically states that if a class is, um, you know, at a certain level, typically if it's below the guidelines, uh, we'll open up a certain amount of seats, um, as we get ready for the open enrollment process to start in early February, so, uh, bring it forward to the board is required, uh, in January, and so that's the first step in this process, and so what we're presenting to you is based on enrollment projections, class size sections, and then number of seats that would correspond to that, to match up with policy.
I, I do have some questions on that, so is the forty-nine on top of what we, are already have as far as open enrollment, is that the new? Okay, so then are we?
We, we have graduating seniors that, so it's forty-nine new, but there will have some moving out graduating.
So, a few, because in this it says, um, what does it say, ten in grade eleven, so maybe give or take ten possibly for what will be graduating, do we know how many are graduating?
I think nine currently.
Nine, okay, so then about forty for the new number?
If all seats are filled.
Okay.
And so that's, as you get to the higher grades, that tends to be less common.
Yeah.
Uh, lower grades, it's usually a little more frequently, but yeah, eleven, um, I, I don't know if we'll, we'd fill those.
No, generally we're between forty and fifty percent in most.
Okay.
Uh, the seats we post.
Okay, and then are we taking into account, um, just in general, I mean, the low, schools are losing students all over the place, um, you know, enrollment numbers are going down. Are we adding to, like, what was the number for last year? schools are losing students all over the place, you know, enrollment numbers are going down. Are we adding to, like, what was the number for last year?
In terms of open enrollment?
Open enrollment, yeah.
How many seats we had open?
Wasn't that many.
So just so you know, Jennifer, it's traditionally been a very small number, like a couple of years, or at least one year, it was zero.
Forty nine just seems like a lot.
It seems like it's the biggest number I've ever seen.
Open enrollment, is it was zero?
New open enrollment seats, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, new open enrollment seats. It's something that traditionally we are cautious to do because you've got.
Well, that's, my concern is when I'm looking at the numbers, so say there's no students with disabilities and we're just doing the eight thousand two hundred and twenty four, just for those forty nine seats, we're looking at over four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the, so just to kind of back up a little bit, we, we gain revenue. And then, so there's a spread, so basically you gain revenue, it's not as much as from a resident. And what we've done in the past is, you know, we've got fixed overhead expenses, and if there are a couple of seats available in a room, it might make sense to put, you know, some kids from outside the district in there to, you know, allow, you know, basically raise the revenue, save a little fixed overhead. We were always very cautious about, you know, a couple of things there. One is the, I've heard a lot about the population growth actually in Cedarburg with all the new developments that are occurring, and I think we're looking at, are we doing a population study this year?
Yeah, we'll do one.
Yeah, and I've heard talked about, oh, we might have to, you know, make, expand Thorson or something like that. So it struck me as a very, a lot, a lot larger number than I was expecting, and it's a little bit concerning to me personally.
Myself as well.
I mean, the third grade number just really jumps out to me, thirteen kids. Do you know how many are currently open enrolled in that grade? That we'd be adding thirteen to? So Dave, or does anybody, go ahead.
So perhaps we should just note that our open enrollment numbers over the years have been going down. So as our resident population increases, we've been, if you will, weaning ourselves off of open enrollment. So open enrollment is not used to create sections. It's used to actually fill sections. So for a class of sixteen, we'll plop in two or three open enrollment kids to get to nineteen, for example. So it's strategically used throughout the district. You don't find a section of kids that are equivalent of an entire section of open enrollment. And what we're trying to do is stabilize the section across the elementary, so you have less Thorson, generally eventually it can be a four-section school. Parkview eventually as well, and Westland sitting at a three-section school. So we try to stabilize those sections, and we just use open enrollment to.
So you're saying so that the, the class size numbers are equal or even all the way across? You, you are filling them with open enrollment, is that what you're saying?
If, if we can, yeah, if we can pepper them in to keep the sections the same, then that's what we do to stabilize that staff.
The ideal situation would be if, you know, all the students, resident students came in equally balanced per grade, per building. But we don't get that. We get, you know, over ninety students in one grade at Thorson, and like seven at Parkview, for example, and so you have different sections, and then, you know, balancing the sections since you're dealing with three or four at Thorson and Parkview. Once you add a section, then it's a big shift in terms of the class size for each section. So it really is balancing out kind of what we're unable to control with our existing population.
I think normally we've been decided to like one or two. Because you don't know what's gonna happen with the actual Cedarburg population. And so my, my concern is, once you, once you have the open enrollment students added, they're with you forever. So, you know, if we're looking at a potential of being able to fill those thirteen seats next year because of building projects or people moving in or houses being built, it might look okay this year, but the next year it's gonna look bad because we're gonna have a, we're gonna have more, more students than we can handle, and we might have to add a section.
Well, it's just, it's, it's the trickle-down effect of what's gonna have, you know, the potential to happen with, then you need more buildings and you need, you know, it's just a, it's a heavy burden on the taxpayer.
Yeah, and Todd's point, it has changed over the last couple of years. I think three or four years ago, we had probably about a hundred and ninety open enrollment in students, and now we're a hundred and forty seven for this year. So it's gone down.
But we'd be adding forty.
If all those seats got filled.
They won't get filled. We average, it's fifty is generous, we'll average about thirty percent of the seats that we open.
Well, why do you open them if you don't expect them to be filled?
Board, board policy, we set these numbers by board policy. And so down below this section writing here, Laura, is what the, actually the administrative guideline guides us in and determining those seats.
So these are the guidelines, but then the board can adjust these numbers as they see fit, or?
Well, I mean, we generally, we generally bring to the board what, what the numeric, what the analysis looks like after we go through total number of students where there's room available, look at the, the, the class size ranges, and then apply the formula to, and it's actually twenty three, twenty three, twelve, oh, one, the administrative guideline that we use to help us determine those numbers. So these aren't things that we come up with on our own, just like, what do we, you know, what are we kind of anticipating, or feel would work best? These are really set through our class size ranges and then the, the, the policy the board has given us.
Yeah, so it's like the max, basically. And then the board can decide, the board wants to make it a smaller number, or tweak, I think we can do it by each, each grade if we wanted to, right?
Well, traditionally, yeah, you can do that. Traditionally, we've opened like a minimum of like one seat, that's what you've seen over the years, Dave, it was like one seat, and then once we accept that one, if we see that we have more room, then we can go to the waitlist and strategically pick kids off.
During the summer, correct.
During the summer. What we're proposing here, the numbers that we are proposing here, we're asking the board to approve, and so then we can fill up to those numbers of seats that we have open. So if you want in, like, what is that, first grade, thirteen in, in, in third grade ends up being just, just over one point, so many kids, it's only ten sections of third grade, so we're talking.
I mean, how many do we have currently in third grade open enrollment kids?
Well, our current second grade is fourteen.
Okay.
So next year.
We'd be at twenty four. I mean, that's almost an entire class. That's a lot to me, I think.
So Mike, I have another question about this. Given the unique just landscape of everything, the potential to utilize and use a lot more of the seats than you're anticipating is a possibility, correct?
Yeah, because a max is a max, so you.
Well, we can, yeah, and to me, it's just a very high number. It's very.
So without, let's just play that out. So without that number, you, that thirteen would drop us, I think, below the class size guidelines, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm doing the math.
It brought us up to the lowest part of that.
For what year?
Well, then we would drop a teacher. I mean, this is.
Or you shift the teacher, right? We've done that before.
And then you'd shift the teacher to wherever, you, you, I'm just, I'm just playing how this works. So then what will happen, what has happened traditionally is when you take a number of sections and start combining sections, we'll hear, we've heard from parents about now you're, you're, you're combining sections, and our kids are used to these number of sections. I mean, I'm just.
Well, they don't go, they don't travel in the same section every year in elementary.
No, they travel in this, no, they travel, no, you're correct, Dave. The number of kids in that section tends to be lower, so we'll up the section number if you.
Right, but we're not gonna, like, as, as my, as the way it worked, my kids were there, is you weren't always in the same section, right? Right.
You're not traveling the same cohort.
Right.
The way they say is they're getting used to the number of students in the.
Call it the number of students, yeah.
So that's gonna increase, and the board, we've heard from that before from the board, and that's why the board came up with this policy to keep those class sizes low and, 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 if you will, steady over the years. So if we make that shift, which we can certainly do, it's gonna boost the class sizes, and we tend to hear from parents when we have had larger class sizes, that's why we work with the guidelines.
Yeah, I know. It'd be a one-year thing. I mean, if we do the population, I, I would really be more comfortable with having that population study data before committing to this large of a number of students from outside the district.
Yeah, and my concern is just kind of reiterating that we have the potential to lose a lot of students each year just because the nature of everything right now. So we potentially are gonna have high numbers, the max numbers like this every year, and possibly growing too.
The study we're doing this year won't be ready for this month. We do have a study that was on October nineteenth that could give some good insight. We do know a couple of developments are in the works, so it'd be larger developments, and so we're keeping our eye on those. So that'd be a big part of it. I would say, again, to where, compared to where we were, OE ins down, OE outs also up though. And so from a financial perspective, with OE in down about forty students, OE out up about forty students, that's a swing of about six hundred thousand dollars for that district. And so we just have to make that up on another end, because that's a big chunk of revenue and expenses we have to account for overall.
Was OE up, no, OE out, up at all because of COVID, where you think some of the students will come, do you think some will come back?
It changed, it got a little bit better this year, and so the big jump was last year was the first full year of COVID, went to like fifty to about ninety, and this year it dropped eighty-three. So it dropped a little bit. Our hope is, yeah, I'll get back down to that fifty number.
So that would affect all of this too, right?
Not in terms of the number of seats we open up, because OE out, I mean, in a sense, yes, because, yeah, if you have more students in the class, that affects the class size, but overall, our percentage of OE outs been pretty low in general, so.
Tend to have more kids wanna come into the district than our kids.
And what happens when the, I guess, the the new housing plan and all those build, and then we have more kids and to add more number, we, you know, we already filled all these spots, so then classes are filled and we have these new, you know, developments coming. What's the plan for that? We just?
It's kind of a practice we've done the last couple of years, in terms of going from a number close to two hundred to get close to one fifty, it kind of started to bring that number back down a little bit, in terms of to see where the spots are open and bring them there. These seats that are open, even if they all were filled, they just brings us to the bottom level of class size guidelines.
But there's a lot of room to grow within that range.
But then we're really, we have really small classes then.
The board is committed to that, correct, Laura? Yeah, so that's a good point. Say it again, with these approvals, the seats were still at the lower end of the class sizes. So if we were to drop, not accept these and drop them, we may be able to combine and adjust stacking at a couple grade levels.
To answer your question, Jennifer, you'd have to add a section, which means another teacher. And the space to put the class.
And which?
For.
If you, if you have, if you have, if you get to the point where there's, there's so many kids in the district that you're not, you're not gonna have a twenty nine student third grade.
You're right. And when, when we did this study a few years ago, I think we had, I wanna say, then you had you shut those today. That study, I think, out of that subdivision, there was, what percentages were elementary? I think it was close to eighty.
It was about half that came out of there.
Out of the elementary, then.
Ninety.
So when you have a development, you get about half the kids go to the elementary, the other half are split to the middle school, high school, is the way it is.
Yeah, so for that one, it's almost fifty three students at the elementary level, and with the new developments coming up, if that's what we're anticipating, that's a big number to have to accommodate.
And the OE, the nice thing about OE students, you can move them around a little bit, try to avoid doing that as much as possible. Once you have residential developments, those students are coming in, and then we start to have a proper discussion in terms of if they all, especially if they all go to one building, it's starting to get too large. Right now Thorson's about eighty students higher than Parkview, and so that's something we definitely keep an eye on over the next couple of years.
And is Thorson maxed out as far as like the sections at the grades, or is there?
They are four sections across buildings, so.
For all, all?
So they could probably take one, one or two bubble classes of five within that building, but then after that, you end up there.
But the, but the board could decide to raise class sizes. You don't have to have a bubble classroom. You could say, we're gonna go from the lower class sizes, we're gonna set class sizes at twenty five, twenty seven, whatever it would be, and then you don't have to have a bubble classroom, and you don't bring out another additional teacher.
Yeah, if you look at some of those class sizes, they're operating, I mean, high is twenty six, Westland twenty four is a little bit higher, but most of them are around twenty.
So is there a bubble at Parkview for the second grade then? Cause there's ten sections for the proposed third grade versus nine for second, first, and kindergarten and fourth.
So this is this year's, this year's sections, and so this is the ten section that'll be third grade next year. You can see they're pretty evenly split between Parkview and Thorson in terms of their enrollment, and they're lower end of the class, class size capacity, but this is kind of where we kind of get into this dilemma of the guidelines for kindergarten first grade are eighteen to twenty four. They get up to the next level, second through fifth grade, and the guidelines go up. But like, you know, we've said is that typically parents get used to the lower class sizes, and so do you go to three sections of that, and they're, you know, twenty eight, twenty seven, kind of higher end of it? Or do you keep and disroll those grades forward? That's kind of the dilemma we've been trying to manage over the last couple of years. But the reason, you know, next year's fourth grade, this year's third grade has nine sections. You can see Thorson has a huge class, they have ninety six students, but then Parkview is a lower one, we can manage a three-section setup.
But we don't know how many open enrollment students are in there that we could possibly move from school to school.
We do, yeah, yeah. I mean, this, this chart breaks it down by, by, just by grade, but we do have the data that says by building, and we go through that process typically. Now, I will say that Thorson doesn't have a lot of open enrollment students, just because of the nature of their development.
And how often are we moving students? Like, that can't be common.
We have.
Yeah.
If we ever have.
We did, we, well, we have, prior to, prior to becoming to the district, there was movement.
Open enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can move to a couple. It gets complicated because a lot of times there's siblings involved.
Yeah, I have another question about that. So if, do we accept siblings? Like, say there's an open enrollment for this grade, but there's a sibling, do we just take them and say, okay, we'll throw you in too? Or is it more?
It's part of that analysis.
It's part of this, yeah. So they have to guide.
They do get, they do get preference, but it's part of this analysis.
And there is a stage during a roll enrollment, we can say you can't attend here anymore, right?
Well, we have, we have to, whenever we, what do we announce, or the board puts it in, we have to set those, and then that definitely would be it.
Well, like ninth grade or sixth grade?
The transition between.
Transition.
Ninth grade, yeah. So the, the board asks all families to apply from eighth grade to ninth that are in the district. The board set that as because of the private schools, we were showing these students who are getting from private schools to public schools, and so that's why they put that, by law, you can do it at one time, you can make families reapply.
If there's like more than, if there are applicants than seats, then it's all random, it's all random.
Drawing type thing, I believe.
Yeah, it's like a random lottery kind of.
Yeah, at that, at that point, correct, yeah. But we, my seven years, and I don't know before myself, we've never got to.
No, we've got, except max capacity, the last of.
I'm gonna pop to Webster and to high school. I guess my question is for number of sections. I understand in the elementary, it's really by grade and teacher. How do you determine the number of sections? Is that like for quote unquote, I know they don't really have them in the high school, but a whole room divide all the kids?
I guess the number of English sections.
Conferences, okay.
The same thing at high school, we do it by English because students require that, four years of English.
Okay, cause like for seventh grade, you're adding fourteen here. I mean, a projected class size is twenty three. I mean, how many do we currently have open enrolled in seventh grade before we add the fourteen?
So this year's sixth grade will be seventh grade, next year's ten.
So we're at a whole class, really?
That's what happens, you have them forever, and you have to, you know, they're, they're a member of of the, you know, they're in the district at that point, and it's, and you have to obviously accommodate our own citizens that live here. So that's a, that's a large number, you, you know, it, that's.
Ten percent of your class is open enrollment.
So we're trying to maintain the lower end of those class sizes. So even with those fourteen in there, you can see we are at, we're gonna end up at the, is that right, projected class size, twenty, twenty three?
Yeah, that would be this, this year.
That, is that without the, that's without the fourteen, right? We're at twenty three?
No, we're at ten currently.
Wait, no, wait.
No, she's saying with the, with the class size, the number twenty three on there.
Right, yep, twenty three currently.
Right, so, so if we left it at twenty three, and we had all kinds of development, and we got fifteen new students next year that are Cedarburg students, then they just slide right in? If we had fourteen open enrollment and those fifteen students come in, this is a if, I'm not seeing what happened, I don't know. Uh now we'd all of a sudden be in a position where we're above the class sizes and we have to add a section. And I'm just thinking back to the, the population study we did, the one in nineteen. It it looked, it showed us in a, in a, in growth trajectory, which was, which was really exciting, and we, we're happy about that.
So the, so that's an approach that could be taken. Uh the benefit of that is that as you gra- add residential enrollment, you have the revenue boost to add the section. The drawback of keeping it where it is, expecting enrollment or residential enrollment doesn't come, is if the class is, say, low. And then you're foregoing the revenue from the open enrollments, um you end up cutting back on sections. Or keeping the class sizes where they're at and trying to offset the, the revenue that's.
Well, you can, but you could always add open enrollment at that point if the growth doesn't come.
Right. At, at a certain year, yeah. Um there is a s- um kind of a method of the process in terms of. Usually it's released in February, people start applying. If you do it late, you typically don't get as much.
Right, by that time, parents, you live, you have, parents are, have three choices in terms of open enrollment, so. If the district doesn't announce that they have seats available, most people are gonna take one of the three and comply to different districts, so. After a while, there's, there's less and less applications, so it's harder to get, you know, like, like we say, even, even on, even on an application, we maybe fill forty percent of our seats. With open applications, so, or with the bonus seats.
And secondary is even harder, just because.
Yeah, many, many, many people don't move their kids once they, once they get them established.
So if the board cho- so chooses, you can take thirteen, let's look at third grade and make that, you know, zero or one or whatever you would, you would like. It would then drop that class size below the guidelines. And then we would have to make a decision, do we wanna then move the teacher off? Um out of there and and then have, I don't know, the remaining sections be higher to get us to the lower end of those guidelines.
Or you can make it five instead of thirteen, or.
But we could.
It's not say one or thirteen.
We won't get the number, if we, we, I, I don't know, I don't have the numbers if you, what we generally. Receive, but I want, I think that is between thirty and fifty percent, I, I would. My guess is I wouldn't be wrong.
Seven, six.
That we would get out of that thirteen.
How does it work? If you say you have thirteen and thirteen apply, you have to take thirteen?
We do, yeah.
Yep.
So I guess that would concern me, assuming that we're gonna get half and then we don't.
Right, so maybe you cut those numbers, like the big numbers in half, so just to make, kind of as a stop loss, or kind of as a, as a. Um, if you wanna call it a, um, I'm using insurance terms, a stop loss, a uh, a, a, a limited, you know.
Right.
To make sure you hedge it a little, or.
Right.
Hedge it a little bit and then put a stop in there.
So you could, you could cut that, let's use that as example, cut that thirteen to six, right, or, 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 or five or six. Whatever it is, and then um we can post those and see what applications we receive. And as, once that window closes, we can offer those seats that say all five or six accepted. And then later in the summer, we're seeing that our, 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 our numbers are still trending low. Because we don't have enough resident students to get us up to the lower end of the class sizes. We can still then, there's a waitlist, and we can go to the waitlist and say, would you like to come and join us for open enrollment? I'll be a part of this. That's the strategy the district has used in the past, like it says one, for example. Under grade five, it says one seat open to grade five, so we'll get an application if all goes well. But there have been times we opened a seat and didn't get any applications, so let's say we have one in fifth grade, and then in July, we see that. Um fifth grade is actually trending a bit below the class sizes, and there's a waiting list on open enrollment. We can accept two or three, or offer it to them. They may not accept it. Uh because it's so late in the year, most parents wanna know when they're going to school, like, you know, the beginning of July. Um and it gives us the greatest flexibility, I guess.
Yeah.
So we don't have to commit those large numbers.
Yeah, so you could cut those numbers, the large numbers down to something that would protect the district. I don't know if there's a big risk at eleventh grade. Cause I mean.
Generally, most, most kids are.
Yeah, plus, plus, uh it's not that hard to, to deal with ten, eleventh graders for two years.
Kate, are you listening to all of this?
I, I am, I am, I, I, I can hear the best uh consistently, but I think I've picked up most of it. Um, I would really prefer to do what was just discussed. To head their best a little bit and not open so many seats. But maybe that I'm having a waiting work to fill in a little bit later in summer, so that we're not. Um, you know, tied down to filling every, every one of those seats. Um some, some of the, some of the anticipated seats, I think, are a little bit high for my comfort level.
Mine too. I, I agree with that, I think. I feel comfortable doing that, cutting some of the large numbers, and then. As Todd stated, giving us the ability in the summer if we need to, um going in on the waitlist.
So what's, if we're looking at this, um let's look at this, so I have one seat in four K, first, second, fourth and fifth. Are we okay with the one seat in all of those grades?
I am.
And, and then we have thirteen, then we can get to a motion, that's just, then we have thirteen in grade three, we wanna reduce that to.
Six or seven, six.
I think that would be.
Yeah, six.
You, you eventually vote on it, so it's okay.
Yeah.
Then, um, uh, uh, seven seats in grade six. That's a big number too.
That is, yeah.
I would be okay with taking that seven. Um, my thought is those kids are coming into middle school, you, you probably would, you could throw that. Um.
We did.
I'd be okay with taking that at seven if we're going with six in third grade as well.
So seven in grade six, um we have fourteen.
I, that's, it's a little high for me. Um, what is the current number right now for sixth grade? Like, what do we have currently?
You mean in the fifth grade?
Yeah, the fifth grade, that'll be sixth grade for this.
Um so we have one ninety-nine in there, um and so we're projecting two oh nine.
No, what's, what's the open enrollment for fifth grade right now? Sorry.
Uh we have seventeen.
See, that's, if you add the six, that's a whole class, so I would like to see that cut in half too, if possible.
I agree.
So part of the challenge, when you, yeah, when you think it's a whole section, you're not gonna eliminate a whole section of kids. Cause you need a teacher to have a full road for a teacher, you have to teach so many English language arts classes.
Yeah, but we.
Then you're talking about, you know, if we eventually, if you think in those terms like that, it's a whole section of twenty-four. To eliminate that, you're not gonna hire a teacher to teach seventy-eight, seventy.
No, but there's, there's other growth happening in the area too, where we're gonna, like, you know, acquire more students. And so that's gonna be a burden then, um that we're gonna have to figure out, so if we can.
The other thing just to note here, with our, the numbers that are in this document, the open enrollment document.
Yeah.
They are projections of what we'll have next year, so the sixth grade at two oh nine, we have one hundred ninety-nine fifth graders this year. So we're projecting some growth.
Some added, like.
Based on historical numbers. Uh I think that's, the average over the last like five or six years.
So we've gone back and done that.
Well, like to the point of Todd, Todd's point, you can, if there's a big demand and there's waitlist, then.
Pull that in the summer.
Things start to, to shift into focus better, we can, yeah, we can.
It's, it's not always a guarantee, because it's so late in the year, and so when Ben is talking budget tonight, you know, there is a budget number for the whole week's seats. So as we reduce these, the likelihood of us gaining, you know, individuals in July is, is not, it's not high. And if they are coming, it's usually, you know, there's something else going on. Um so there is a, a financial impact to this, and we'll talk about it at the budget. So we had uh seven seats in grade six.
But then, did you guys want?
Uh is there some feeling that we wanna reduce it or what? Uh what do you think about five?
I'm, I'm okay with five, I'm, I, you know.
Well, what are we gonna do with seventh grade? Well, wait, I'm seven, is that seven?
That's next, we're going to that next, I'm just going to, I'm just going through this.
Sixth grade, um, you said five, Kate?
Um, yeah, I'd be a little bit more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's better, to me, it's better than the seven. Um. Yeah, it's just sorry, it's a, it's a high open enrollment number that there we have, so. Um Laura, what do you think?
I mean, yeah, I can go with five.
Five? Okay, yeah, we're, we're okay with the five.
So five seats in grade six, fourteen in seven?
Yeah.
Do you wanna say that's a seven?
I, I would like to, yes. Okay.
Seven in grade seven, and then ten seats in grade eleven.
That one doesn't, I mean, like, like today's point, um, you know, with, at that grade level. Um. It's not as much of a risk, I guess I would say.
When do we find out if the open enrollment out have decided to come back? At what point would that happen?
Eighty September.
September, yeah.
Or they just say we're back?
Because once they're open enrolled, they're just considered a student, so they don't have to redo anything each year, correct? They're just.
Oh, yeah.
They're just in, they're like a, a resident.
If they're, yeah, if they're a new student who's left, um, they don't want a reporting process, and we have to wait for the other district to report to us, and like, sometimes takes a while. And so, yeah, it's typically during that September count.
But would that be, so it's a Cedarburg resident who decided to go somewhere else? And they have, do we know?
Usually they tell us, I mean, they're.
You, yeah, you know.
Usually they would enroll and indicate, sometimes it's before the end of the school year.
Yeah, because they have to get their records instead of.
That's usually how we know for sure, when we get a records request.
I, I just feel like with the whole COVID environment, maybe there'll be more that will come back than typical. Just because maybe they love to go virtual, and I do wanna go in person, so I, I, do I know? No, but I think there's a change.
And sometimes you have families who move into Cedarburg, they're maybe going to another district, and they become open enrollments technically, cause they live here, but they wanna finish schooling in the other district. So you have all those dynamics too, but.
Okay.
Um, so what are you thinking then for grade eleven?
I'm good with ten. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think.
I am too. Kate, are you okay with ten for grade eleven?
I am. I, I'd like to ask this question, and I apologize if it hasn't answered. Um, how are you determining what's available in the high school when, you know, you've got kids who might be taking. It's not necessarily all ninth graders in the class that you give them, but how do you determine that?
We do it off of uh six sections of English, since there's four, four years of English required, we, we base it off of English. Do you hear that, Kate?
So that applies to the core classes, but how do you determine that for? I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious how there's no seats in three grade levels, but then ten continuing a year.
I, I think, Kate. If you look at that projected student enrollment for grade eleven, it is. It is con- I would say considerably.
Class size, that's.
It's just the traveling class size, Kate, so like certain grades just have smaller numbers um each year. I think that's kind of what it.
How you can calculate that, where it's, like you're, say you have a fifth grader, and they just, they have a uniquely small um class size. And so that's how they anticipate what it's gonna be that following year for that same grade, or the grade as it moves up. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So like, so grade twelve or um, like grade ten. What's a smaller one? Um, can she see, is she? Oh, do you not, do you?
Ten more ducks.
Oh, okay. Um.
If we look at grade nine, it has two hundred sixty-eight, grade ten, two eighty-five, but then grade eleven drops to two fifty-four. So the one that's at two fifty-four is the one we'd say we'd let ten in at, so.
Yeah, it's just the smaller class sizes.
And grade twelve had two eighty, so and that grade is leaving, right? So we're placing, you know, that's probably the biggest, right, oh no, I guess grade ten. But it is a bigger class, so I don't think for the high school that would be affected as much.
Does that make sense, Kate, or do you want me to? I, I don't know if you can see the chart we're looking at, but it's just, it's basically determined on the class size. So if your kindergartner has a small class, you know, and then first grade for them is the same, they just kind of anticipate that small. As it continues with their school career.
Yeah, yeah, I do have the chart. I, I'm, I'm just kinda curious, probably break it down when it's coming back to. And okay, just going by the student number in that group. Okay. So. Should we move through each grade level we just discussed and make a motion, break it down that way? Are we at a point of doing that, or do you guys wanna have a little more discussion?
I'm fine doing that. Laura, do you have any?
No.
I can, I can read, I can read what I have, Kate, if that, if that's helpful.
Um, sure.
So our twenty.
Go ahead.
Our twenty-two, twenty-three uh enrollment, open enrollment projections are one seat in each grade, four K, one, two, four. And five. Six seats in grade three. Five seats in grade six, right?
Yep.
Seven seats in grade seven. And ten seats in grade eleven.
So can I just make a motion to approve that? Okay.
And so I'm reading in our minutes and files, it works for everybody.
Okay. Um all motion to approve the numbers that Todd just read as far as class sizes and grade levels. And forward to the board.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think that was very good. Any comments? Yep, okay.
Alright. So that goes forward to the board uh next week, uh for the view and approval. Alright, uh so our next agenda item is our budget calendar for next year. Uh this is something that the P and F committee reviews every year, um typically approves, uh it's just a forecast for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh pretty standard, uh there's no major changes to the budget calendar compared to previous years. Uh typically what you have is the winter months, there's a lot of forecasting, getting ready for the upcoming year. We have a January pupil counts coming up, uh that has an impact on equalization aid. Uh then typically in spring, we start to put together a budget, um templates for departments and buildings. Um so we send those out, get them back from administrators, and start to put that together. Um start forecasting a little bit more and bigger items for the budgets as we prepare for the June preliminary budget approval. Uh then work through summer, obviously continue to work on the budget, and then the fall's really the big time for um pulling everything together for the, the fiscal year. We have the um third Friday count in September, which is, has a big impact on our revenue limits and overall finances. October, we see equalized values um certified, um and aid certified. And so we set the tax levy, bring forward the um original budget for approval, as well as a tax levy certification. And then after that, it's really, you know, going through the fiscal year. Um at the end of the fiscal year, we start to make amendments. Um to kind of clean things up, and then the following summer, we go through the audit process and then present it the following January, so. This obviously does not include everything that's included with the budget, but it's kind of some of the main uh highlights uh for the fiscal year. Uh so this, we just look for approval, and typically we don't bring this forward to the full board, we share it with a superintendent update, uh once it's approved by P and F.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the budget calendar.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirm? No, okay.
Alright. So next we look at the actual budget forecast for the upcoming year. Uh no action needed for this. Uh but as I said, we start to begin that process of looking at the next financial year. Um and at this point, it's really looking at just general forecasting, uh looking at uh multiple years out and what that might entail. Uh starting to put together different pieces from the state, um and other things that we wanna pull together. Uh, but it's high-level type, um, approach at this point. Uh, we use a forecast model each year to project, um, kind of where we're going. It pulls in a lot of different factors, it's a very large Excel spreadsheet, um, but what we do is start to develop scenarios just to look at. Kind of different directions we could take for the upcoming year, um, for for twenty-two, twenty-three. But we know for twenty-two, twenty-three is the second year of the BNIO budget, um, so we don't anticipate any changes to that, um. The state budget did increase state aid, uh, but did not increase revenue limit, um, so our revenue authority is gonna remain the same for this year. And next year, um, and the main reason that was put in place is the influx of federal money that came as a result of the the pandemic, and so. The, um, focus for the next, for this year and next year, possibly even for twenty-three, twenty-four, is using those federal dollars as much as we can to balance the budget. Um, and and kind of make it work from, from year to year. Two things we're working on right now and keeping track of. First, um, we know what S R one is, that's been claimed, and that's done, all tied out. S R two, uh, we made a large claim, um, for expenses we had in, uh, this fiscal year, or last fiscal year, and we'll have some expenses for this fiscal year as well. Uh, so we anticipate closing out that grants by the end of this, um, fiscal year. Uh, that ended up, total allotment for that grants was around eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. The initial guaranteed allotment was two hundred thousand, but we got a big chunk from the set aside funds, uh, that came from the state. Um, so that got us up to eight hundred thousand. Uh, the last round, S R three, um, the guaranteed amount, uh, has been set, and so we know that's. Um, gonna, uh, yield about four hundred thousand dollars to us. What we don't know is the set aside funds for for that grants. Um, the proposal was put forward and submitted to the federal government, uh, was gonna allocate funds. Basically, um, if a district had less than per, um, a certain level of per people funding from the initial allotment. They qualify for the set aside funds, since our, uh, low-income populations, um, relatively low compared to the state. Uh, we didn't get a lot from the initial allotment, um, so we qualified for the set aside funds. Um, and then the second caveat for, uh, those set aside funds was that you had to have a certain level of in-person instruction for last year, which we did. Um, so all those, um, boxes, uh, we checked, um, and the proposal was seven hundred eighty-one per pupil that we did receive. Uh, that would result in probably right around two, two million dollars for us, uh, for those set aside funds. Um, so that's what we have been projecting, uh, but as of right now, the federal government pushed back and said. They did not approve it yet, and so there's a little bit of back and forth with that. Um, so that's pending. Um, but that's still out, that those funds are out there, so we, our hope is that they do settle something close to that, so we do receive that revenue. Um, and so basically what I do is put together scenarios, um, looking at how that could impact, um. That S R three allocation, and then other assumptions I typically built into the 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 budget each year. Um, three different scenarios, um, but each scenario, what I assume in each one is. A hundred dollar per pupil increase to the revenue limit starting in twenty-three, twenty-four, that'd be the next, um, BNIO budget year. So twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five would be the, the unknown, still to be approved, uh, by BNIO budget. Twenty-two, twenty-three, like I said, we know what that is, and it's been approved. Um, so I'm assuming a hundred dollar per people increase, could be more than that, could be less than that. Uh, we won't know, uh, probably for another year or so. Um, I'm projecting this flat enrollment, so obviously if that goes up, that would increase our revenue. Um, this year and last year has remained relatively flat, um, but there's also a lot of factors going on overall. Uh, in terms of this pandemic and everything going on with that, so, very interesting to see how that. Um, you know, goes in the future years, um, because before the pandemic, our enrollment was increasing, uh, per year, so. Um, the biggest private discussion we'll have for the next couple of months is twenty-two, twenty-three. What CPI will look like, and so we'll, we'll get that number probably sometime this month, but as of right now, we're projecting to be about four and a half percent. Which would be the largest we've seen twenty-plus years. Uh, as comparison last year is just over one percent. Uh, in previous years, it's been, you know, one to two percent, sometimes almost close to zero, so four and a half percent is a very large CPI increase. Um, but it's strictly based on market, um, factors, and so, uh, that's how fast inflation is going up, so that's, uh, kind of what we're seeing, and. Even early projections for twenty-three, twenty-four might be that high as well, so. Um, so I put in four and a half percent for twenty-two, twenty-three for CPI increase, and then two percent in each year after that. Uh, cause two percent is kind of the, what we kind of fall back on. And then five percent increases for benefits, which is kind of the, the go-to default, obviously that can change. Uh, and then two percent increase in property values, which doesn't really affect our budget as much as impacts the tax levy. Uh, the good news, uh, the forecast for the tax levy is in a pretty good spot. I think we're, um, we'll be in a position where we can manage it from year to year and not see a huge increase. Uh, but we've also done things to kind of put ourselves in a good place, uh, for this year as well, so. Um, I don't anticipate any issues with that, the biggest thing is it's gonna be the budget and how we can manage that. Um, so the scenarios we put together would be if there is no S R three set aside funds, if we just got. S R one, S R two, and then four hundred thousand for S R three. Um, so the dilemma there is that with no new revenue limit increases, and a four and a half percent in, percent increase for inflation. You can see twenty-two, twenty-three becomes a large deficit as a result. That four and a half percent increase for inflation, uh, is probably about a million dollar impact. On our budget. And then this, you know, it compounds after year after year for that, so. Um, so that'd be kind of a worst-case scenario, I think. Uh, the second, or the scenario one, which is the second scenario on the, the page. Uh, would be if S R three did come in at seven hundred eighty-one per pupil for the set aside, so the current, um, goal was proposed. And so what ends up happening there is that we will take those funds, um, balance the budget for this year, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then twenty-three, twenty-four is when we run out of the funds and start having to, you know, think about how do we manage long-term impacts of inflationary increases. Probably the hardest thing to manage with, you know, balancing a budget with grant funds, which are not recurring. Is that what, what do you do once those grant funds runs out, runs out, and you have recurring costs that keep on going, so. You'll see in each one of the scenarios, twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond, they're pretty similar in terms of the deficit. Um, because like I said, you're using the grant funds to balance the budget, but then, you know, those revenue sources dry out. And then scenario two is just another, um, way to look at it, um, it'd be the S R three set aside, but then stopping a three hundred thousand dollar deposit in the fund forty-six. The drawback is that you are taking away something for long-term planning, um, that we're really counting on in terms of, uh, you know, future developments, whatever it may be. Um, but just another way to look at it, um, in terms of grabbing a source of revenue. Doesn't mean we have to grab that, um, there's other, um, options we can talk about, we can see.
Yes, I was, why, why are you picking up from forty-six then?
As, as we start to look at, you know, the budget and balancing it, um. It's, it's, you wanna be correct, if you wanna plan long-term, um, but we have budget deficits, you definitely have to see, you know, what, what can you do to make the balance? The budget balance for, for the current year. But even in that scenario, you can see twenty-four, twenty-five, you have that fiscal cliff again, where the grant money runs out. And then you have to account for the increases you did in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-four, so. So that's the biggest dilemma in terms of, or the biggest thing we have to be cognizant of as we plan for next year is. What do we put in place and how do we plan for it long-term? Uh, like I said, levy's in a good spot, um, the other good news is that with the fund balance, um, contributions we made last year. Uh, and the year before that, we put our fund balance in a pretty good spot as well, that we can pull from in future years. Um, but the biggest question is how do you approach, um, you know, inflationary increases, um. And then manage that down the road. The, the, typically when you're putting these forecasts together, you get a lot of red numbers, that's kind of the, the norm, um, and so it's, um. I don't wanna freak anyone out with, you know, one point eight, two million dollar deficits. Um, the biggest thing I wanna point to is just, you know. Just not putting ourselves into a corner where we incur a lot of expenses, but then also have a huge deficit down the road. Uh, the other part of this discussion is just, you know, what I built in this budget for forecasting are really just inflationary increases. Um, but as we look as a program as a whole, we also have budget challenges that are, you know, beyond inflationary. And so that's that second document in Word docs, that looks at some of the larger pieces that we've talked about with our administration. That have seemed, uh, as areas of need, I guess. Um, so we've done CPI, um, pretty consistently over the last ten years. But over the last three years, we've done a teacher compensation plan, and above and beyond that, um, to really, uh, make us more competitive with teacher salaries. Uh, that's set to expire after this year, and so the next question is what do we do after this year and beyond? Um, kind of goes to the same item there, market adjustments, um, we've done market adjustments in the past in terms of hard to fill positions. Um, you know, tough to find ones, um, and so doing something for that to, again, keep us competitive in relation to the year. Penex B, oh, sorry, go.
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm going back, so the teacher compensation plan will end this year. At what point do we as a board decide that, you know, whether we will continue that or not? I mean, what do you reckon on that? Cause the teachers have to plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's just part of this budget process, um, typically we wanna iron that out by spring preliminary budget, but, I mean, it's really. Discretion of the board. There's no set guidelines, if you have to do this, um, there's a wide range of approaches by different districts. Uh, we did a, kind of a three-year approach, uh, cause, you know, we're really living by the BNIO budget structure every two years. And so that three years gave us enough, um, enough and commitment for three years, but at the same time didn't. Put us in a position where you'd have to pull back from a compensation plan, allow us to revisit and say, okay, is this, are we able to afford this, is it working?
So probably as soon as we can, we should.
I would, I would say, I mean, if Congress was here, he'd probably say you wanna do it, really in spring, as teachers start to log in, those positions start to open up.
So where does it get generated? Where does that start, that discussion? Is it in this committee?
Good start here, we've brought that, we, the proposal that Ben's talking about, we've brought that forward to the PNF, and we've had a discussion with the full board. And that's when we got the commitment. We just, we're sure we did some analysis of where our salaries are compared to others, and, and. And, uh, knew that CPI wasn't really getting our teachers ahead, and that's how the board committed to that. And so that six hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's been allocated over the last three years, so there's, there's no dollars left to be allocated, so it is the discussion for the board at this time. It's a good time to be doing it.
And the way that teachers, because we have a union, is that correct, they're increased, they all get the CPI increase, is that it?
Uh, that can be negotiated, how it's distributed, um, so a unit can no- negotiate the percentage increase and how it's distributed. And so over the last couple of years, we've done, you know, to the CPI maximum, and then distributed base of percentage, uh, excluding, um, needs improvement. Evaluation, so, um, but beyond that, um, compensation plan, it's all a discretion of the board.
So this was on top of all?
Yeah, that'd be supplemental.
And one thing that we were kind of working on before the, the world turned upside down here. Was in sort of revamping that whole comp plan, because the, the compensation plan, or improving it. Now, I shouldn't say revamping it, but improving it, because it's been, it's been a work in progress over time, and we were looking at. Wait, you know, how do we, how do we make it better? And I think that got kind of stalled because of other, other factors.
And some is just the, the source of revenue is what really kind of, we have that bonus rule, right, that's just fixed to.
Oh, yeah, well, I'd say, yeah, like the, the allocation, because there was talk about, you know, should we, should we be giving the same kind of bonus to? The, you know, the top performers and the not-so-bad performers are good, or good enough, or what, yeah. So, or do we make that more of a distinction?
Yeah, that's what we're working on, Dave, the compensation, um, plan is, was, was dollars added to the teacher's salary. So that would give back, you know, every year we're before, where the, where the bonuses at one time, about, it's a bonus. Doesn't get added to your salary, so we are working on redoing the bonus piece. The compensation plan requires a longer board discussion on what does that strategy look like, and more importantly, what's the revenue source? You know, cause it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big piece. And as Ben had already noted on this budget projection, there's not a lot of sources of, of revenue.
You know, I think, yeah, if you look at the, the whole comp plan, it is. Like the picture, it's got different components to it, this is a component, this is a component.
Um, so going through this document, um, so it's, it doesn't include outrevenue, though we have a district, there's more that, um, we can probably speak to, it's. Trying to highlight some of the ones that have come recently, that we have a little more background, that we've done more research on. They mostly relate to either compensation or to staffing needs that we've started seeing as either a building's grown, so, you know, Thorson's kind of a larger. Building, their office staffing is set for, you know, a hundred less students, and so they're seeing kind of a push there. Uh, they have different programs that are expanding with, you know, acre space, or, you know, there's different way they're doing IMC, so. Not to say that, you know, we're gonna go through each one of these and say yes or no on them, uh, just kind of a highlight of. We put a budget together, there's inflationary needs, but then even beyond that, there's other needs throughout the district that are coming up. Um, just as you kind of evolve as a program as a whole, and so they relate to, you know, baby detectors, which can be seen as a student safety issue. Technology, uh, when you look at Chromebooks, security camera replacements, um, some of the bigger ones, um. And then that's, that third page on there is highlighting some of the other areas and kind of more general needs. Um, Ted could probably speak this a little more, but just mental health support throughout the system, what does that look like, where do we wanna be, where we're at now? Um, intervention, reading, math, uh, all those different areas. Um, and even that bottom part there, just updating replacement cycle for either equipment or furniture. Uh, you can see that, um, just kind of coming up in different areas, uh, so, for example, today we walked through the high school. Remember the band teachers, you said, you know, the banning reforms we have now are twelve, thirteen years old, typically max is ten years. It's about eighty thousand dollars to replace those, you know, how do we go about doing that, so. That's just one example across the district of some of those needs you see come up.
I have a question about the mental health support, um, because outside of the school system, they're so. Um, there's just, people aren't able to get help right now, because they're just so, you know, worn thin as far as, as, um, doctors and psychiatrists and psychologists. Are we amping up what we are giving to students or able to do, or are we kind of keeping it status quo as far as the plan? As mental health, I mean, we're just, we're gonna see a lot of, um, a lot more issues, a lot more things going on with that.
Right, well, you know, we, we, as, as school-based people, we can only certain amount we can do, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not therapists, we're. You know, educational support, and, and so, yeah, we are doing more with our, what we have, but there's just a limit, because, because of our, you know, licensure and our, our.
What we're, our abilities, yeah.
Ability to do that, so, yeah, we're, we're doing more along the lines of how to build tools and toolbox, and things like that, but, yeah, we're getting to a point that every, every. Every year, there's more kind of coming in, and students needing, you know, leaving classrooms and committing to our county department and, and, and the overload on them. As well as the, the special education five oh four, there's more, so more process procedure, more students in our, our spaces needing additional support, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, some areas need, and then the flip side of that, over the years, we've also been proactive in terms of trying to save on costs. Especially in areas that don't directly impact the classroom, so a couple of years ago, we looked at OPAD, made changes there, that's gonna reduce that liability. Um, savings on energy costs from utility projects, uh, the building grounds program that we have in place has been in there for twenty-plus years. Um, saves the district quite a bit of money, uh, in terms of the work that we have, and then, and it's also a good program for students as well. Um, so there's a lot of pieces we're doing in the backend to try to reduce the amount of, um, you know, costs that we have. Uh, and then the point now we're getting to is just, those options are starting to become more and more limited, where the next step of, you know, how do we balance the budget is gonna be more directly related with. Classroom expenses, direct instruction, you know, higher class sizes, stuff like that, um, it could be, you know, higher. The change in health insurance, you know, benefits, something like that, so, um, this is the point out that we've, we've had made, um. Taken action to try to reduce costs in the backend of things too.
Maybe it's a time to dust off the zero up budgeting.
Right, yeah, so we'll go through that process as well. Being in, um, you know, really a personnel-type industry, um, you know, zero-based budgeting will save some costs.
Well, sure.
When we have three quarters of our, you know, costs and staffing, that's.
Yeah, obviously, you know, looking at the long-term challenges, though, those seem to be like, okay, one of them, or two of them are comp, and, and the rest are things that may or may not be, and. They're, they're, you know, you, and I, and I was just saying, I went, is it eighty-three percent of our budget is on benefits and salary or?
Right, around three quarters, seventy.
Yeah, okay. So now they're good, and, but the rest of it is, you know, there's. If we're talking about, you know, ten thousand dollar items on this list, well, that's something that we could find somewhere.
Right, and, yeah, and when we go through the co- conversation of, you know, different needs for administration, building departments, whatever it may be. One-time costs are a lot easier to approach than a recurring cost, obviously, so we can create with that and try to find the funds for those. Uh, recurring, you're gonna answer the budget and have to. So we just wanted to point that out as, you know, the bigger picture of it's, even extends beyond inflation, uh, what we're projecting, uh, with the budget.
So Ben, on this sheet you're showing us, so this, this includes inflationary increases, correct?
Yep.
But doesn't include anything we had on that, that you just shared in the parameters.
Yep.
And with those inflationary costs, if I'm going to scenario two, let's say that's one, S R three. Uh, yeah, right there is, is summary, that's inflationary, and the red is deficit, we will be looking at twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
Then what did you do as far as like a projection on? And then what did you do as far as like a projection on CPI in this, it was?
Uh, next year is four and a half percent.
And then?
And then two percent after that.
And then the, um, the A, or the, the increase in, um, so let's say. The, the property values in the community go up with inflation, and therefore the assessed values go up, and if the. Mill rate stays or whatever it's gonna be, is that, that baked into there to that increase?
Um, so I put in a two percent increase for property values annually, um, so it's probably pretty conservative, cause we've been really increasing for the last couple of years. Last two years has been eight and five percent.
Yeah.
Uh, the one piece of that is that property values don't really have a lot of impact in terms of our revenue for our budget. It's more of a tax levy side of things, cause as property values increase, it's bigger basis, so. The last slide, you can look at mill rates and total tax, you can see that remains relatively flat for the next five years or so. So it, like I said, I think for the tax levy, we're in a pretty good spot overall, it's just a question of, you know, what do we do with, you know, revenue versus expenses?
Sure, and we forgot, yeah, they, they're talking about the general fund, yeah, okay.
So, and none of these things are in here? Okay.
So, I mean, a lot of things can change, so it's a flat enrollment, and so that could see enrollment increases with the development. A hundred per pupil increase for the revenue limit, um, that could be conservative. Uh, the ba- last buying a budget, two hundred dollars per pupil increase each year. Um, it'll be hard to say what, what comes after this buying a budget, since it's such a unique.
Yeah.
Time, so, uh, so that could change, uh, it could be a higher number, um, so we'll keep track on that. The biggest thing, the biggest challenge that we're seeing is just, you know, inflation is just a lot higher than what we've seen in the past, and so how do you account for that? Um, cause, you know, argument can be made, if you're not getting, putting out CPI, the, the full four and a half percent, then you're, you're falling behind with the market.
Right.
Um, I would say that in discussing with other districts, you know, their approach for CPI for next year is mixed. Um, some say, you know, we'd like to do it, but, you know, we're gonna do something less, or. They have a compensation plan that has a certain percentage baked into it each year, so that, you know, where they watch CPI, so. I would say that if we were able to ma- match CPI four and a half percent next year, it'd give us an advantage in the market, which would be a good thing.
And is that that same, that's in here?
Yep, yeah, okay.
To add four and a half percent?
Right.
And then two percent?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have a question.
Yep.
So, so much of this is based on the S or grant, what did you guys do prior to having them, because I have a recent.
And so in year, years past, um, would end up being a little bit different, so, for example, last buying a budget. The per pupil increase for our revenue limit was two hundred dollars per year, and so that was increasing our revenue from the state each year. Uh, this bounty budget does not include that, um. The other factor that's a little bit different is inflation percentages are a lot higher than what we've seen in the past. Um, last year or this year is just over one percent, whereas future years, or next year at least, we're projecting four and a half percent, so. You have a lot higher inflationary number, and then we have revenue, um, you know, enough to balance the budget from the grants. It's a different source of revenue, where it's a grant, one-time revenue source, as opposed to a revenue limit increase, which is a recurring source of revenue, so. That makes sense.
Well, how much of the S or money went to pay for coronavirus mitigation and extra expenses and all that?
Uh, S or one, we used all fifty thousand for supplies and whatnot, uh, S or two, we used, um. About seven hundred thousand dollars we claimed for, um, expenses for last year and partly this year. Uh, we'll have some more expenses this year, uh, but I would say majority of S or three is gonna be used, um, primarily to balance the budget. Um, and allocate, you know, making sure we're able to go, go get through the year. Uh, we still have to put it under eligible costs, um, that fit within the guidelines of it, uh, so we'll go through that process, but it's gonna be a lot of. Taking expenses we already have and put them on the grant for a year, then taking it back off. So like I said, it, as part of the budget process, um, this time of year, we really start to forecast big-picture items. And then as our next PNF meetings go through into spring, um, we start to get more, um, focused on specific areas. And so as we look towards our next PNF, which would be in March, uh, we start to look more at kind of line items. And focus on next year a little bit more, uh, and start to have more discussion on, you know, it, one of the items may be teacher compensation plans, so we have more discussion of what that looks like. Uh, we'll know what CPI is, uh, at that point, uh, we'll start to get a read on, you know, renewals for benefits, all that's tracking, stuff like that, so. We just start to get more and more focused as we approach, approach the summer, and then, um, you know, there's still things to figure out in fall, but. Uh, starting to kind of narrow it down a little bit, um, but I think the biggest thing just to be on our radar is the long-term forecast of. How do we set ourselves up, um, where we can meet some of the needs for the, the, the system, but also not put ourselves in a, um, hard-fit financial situation down the road? And there's no action on this item, uh, disinformational, uh, I don't know if there's any questions or comments on that?
No, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Um, I do have a question, when we do again, instead of discussing teacher compensation. What timeline would you mention, like, when do we really need to make the decision that having more credit on that?
Uh, so it, ultimately, it's up to the board when, um, they wanna put it in place, um, you know, really, it's at any time. Uh, but if you're looking at an optimal time in terms of trying to retain staff, uh, usually in the spring, uh, cause that's when, you know, positions start opening up for next year. Uh, teach, teachers may start looking, um, and so if you wanna try to keep staff for here. And have that discussion of, we have, you know, a teacher compensation plan that we're continuing or putting in place, uh, that's probably the optimal time, I would say.
But then when is the decision made on not the teacher compensation plan, but the, the actual salary changes?
Uh, for like CPI?
Yeah.
Uh, so typically in summer, we'll have negotiations, and that's a separate committee, uh, that we.
Until next summer?
Yeah, we can really do it whenever, it's been typi- typically in summer.
We just did it in the summer, I think, it was, it was, uh, myself and Kevin.
Yeah.
So you did it for that school year, you do it that late?
Yeah, especially with the new buying a budget. For next year, we can do it earlier. Um, cause we know what buying a budget is for next year, so. Um, yeah, there's no rule of you have to do it by this time, we've, I think back when I, they proved it like a year later.
Yeah, some do it, yeah, some do it really. Something just depends on how the budget's tracking and, and expenses that they know, know about, but to your point, the budget deciding. We'll probably be able to do it before the end of the school year, and that would be for the following year, that those increases are going to go. And then the compensation piece, or if that's, also we talked about, that would be something we would do in the spring as well, and we would do it for returning teachers. Cause they've gotten that increase for this year, the compensation plan, they received that increase, so this year, next year, they have an increase plan.
So that can be a good part of our discussion in March, that's early March, so, start to look at that. Right, um, and so the last item I have in the, it's kind of related to the budget a little bit, uh, just, um. So if you go on the board docs, you'll see our full debt schedule that we have for the district, and as for reference, we have Fund thirty-eight, Fund thirty-nine. Fund thirty-nine is gonna have a lot of refer on the debt, and so that has, you know, certain guidelines of what can be put in there, obviously, between approved. Um, and that's kind of set, since that just occurred for the next twenty years, we have three barrels in there, so not really gonna focus too much on that. The other side of it, Fund thirty-eight, uh, is where we have our kind of debt within the revenue limit, they call it, um. The two barrels we have in there are, one for a refunding bond that we did in twenty-twelve, and then the energy efficiency exemption. Which actually is an exemption above the revenue limit, so it's kind of a unique one, uh, but that's in place for the next, uh, ten years or so, uh, as we pay that off. Uh, what I wanted to focus on is that other one, the Fund thirty-eights, uh, refunding, uh, financing. Uh, cause that's getting close to the end of its life in terms of being paid off, uh, the. Annual debt payments we have for that are hovering around two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand over the next couple of years. Uh, the rate, interest rate on it's very low, um, you know, just around two percent or so. Uh, after this March payment, uh, we're only gonna have, um, just under seven hundred thousand left in that, uh, in terms of principal. Uh, and all of it's callable, which means we can pay it off early if we, we chose to do so. Um, so two options there would be either one, just continue the payments, um, schedule for it. Uh, you can see, you know, we pay about twenty thousand, kind of goes down each year in terms of interest costs each year. And then, uh, two twenty, two thirty-five in, um, principal. Uh, the other option, or other approach you could take is to pay it off early, um, you know, take advantage of the. Uh, funds we've added to fund balance and general fund the last two years, um, pay it off and save a little bit of interest costs. You don't save a ton, cause, you know, it's a low interest, low when it's getting towards the end of its life, uh, but would, you would save around forty thousand, thirty-five, forty thousand interest costs. Uh, the other benefit is that you get it off our books for the next couple of years, and so you get that off there, that's two hundred and forty thousand in recurring costs. That you no longer have, that you can allocate somewhere else. Um, so it could be a way we could take advantage of some of our fund balance to, you know, start developing new sources of, you know, revenue, or not this revenue, but. Reducing expenses to reallocate to whatever we choose, so. Just wanna get, uh, finance committee's feeling on that, uh, if there's, um, you know. If you wanna move forward with it, what we do next is bring, um, bring our financial advisor Baird in, and they'll kind of walk us, walk us through some of the steps of what we need to, need to do to pay it off.
What type of burden would we take on if we paid it off early?
Um, so.
If anything?
It would decrease our fund balance, um, on what we paid it off, so we're using fund balance to pay it down.
Yeah.
For that year, we have additional costs to pay it down, so the six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in principal payment. That would go into shared costs, which is a factor into our equalization aid, and so we lose a little bit of aid for the following year. But over the course of the life, it's, it balances out, cause then we wouldn't have those two hundred thousand dollar costs, at least in that, that area.
And we could allocate it other places where we would.
That'd be a benefit, you'd have two hundred thousand to save, I'm gonna allocate this to teacher compensation, and put it towards good position, whatever it may be. So just trying to free up funds however we can, basically.
So you want our opinions?
Yeah, just wanted to see what your feeling on it.
Do you have any, you wanna go first? Were you able to hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would like to pursue paying it off and paying off those funds.
Yeah, I say the same, um, especially with teacher retention issues and, um, all those things that. We're gonna be facing as far as, um, salaries and things like that, I, I, I push for paying it off.
Yeah, our fund balance increase a good, you know, like, like a million dollars.
Yeah, one point two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take it.
Okay. So we'll go through that, I'll look at it all a bit closer, and we'll bring it back to PNF.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Nope, not, not at this moment, we'll have to actually in the future. And other than that, our future meeting date is March second. So as we get closer, we'll confirm that and make sure it works for everyone, but early March, we're looking at.
Thank you for all your work, yeah, it's always impressive.
More depressing how you.
No, I'm always impressed, it's, it's.
Oh, it's, it's, that's very, very good, like, that's, that's.
I think probably the best, right?
I think so.
I would say the most, I would say, I think so, yes, I agree.
So before you guys leave, you should probably adjourn.
Oh.
Is Kate already gone?
Can I make a motion, if you're in the meeting?
A second.
And, uh, all of the favor?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, most in series and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.